Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the July 25th, 2023 New Bern, North Carolina Board of Alderman meeting. The prayer tonight was going to be coordinated by Alderman Kinsey, but I believe he has Miss Reverend Sampson coming up to give us the prayer of the night. Miss Sampson.
Praise the Lord, everybody.
Praise the Lord.
If my people who are called by my name, then honor themselves and pray and seek my face and turn from their wicked ways, then in the light of heaven forgive their sins, may their lives. Heavenly Father, we bow before you in the precious name of Jesus. Heavenly Father, we thank you for all of your blessings. Heavenly Father, I come before you this evening. Heavenly Father, begging for forgiveness for our permitted sins. And, Heavenly Father, we go forth in your name, Heavenly Father. I ask that you touch the city leaders, Heavenly Father, and all those that are here present this afternoon, Heavenly Father, and that help us to do things decent and in order. And, Heavenly Father, sometimes we can't always agree, but, Heavenly Father, just in case we find some reason to disagree, Heavenly Father, help us to get on one accord. And, Heavenly Father, we thank you for the thing that they have done for us in days past and gone, Heavenly Father. And, Heavenly Father, we go forth, realizing, Heavenly Father, that everything is in your hands. Oh, Father, I ask for leading God and direct our pathways and cover us with your blood from the crown of our heads to the soul of our bitter feet, Heavenly Father. Well, God, we ask for special blessing, Lord, for the land and the country and all, Heavenly Father, that we do and bound to pray for. We thank you now in the name of the Father, the Son, and the Holy Ghost. Praise the Lord. Amen.
Amen.
If you would, please stand with me as we pledge the flag of our country. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Madam Clerk, if you would, please call the roll.
Alderman Creel. Alderman Royal.
Here.
Alderman Astor.
Here.
Mayor Odom.
Here.
Alderman Kinsey.
Alderman Best.
Praise the Lord.
Alderman Brinson.
Here.
Okay, Board, if you've had an opportunity to look at the agenda, I'd entertain a motion to approve if there's any changes.
Make a motion, we approve the agenda as is?
Second. Have a motion as second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Agenda is approved. Next is the consent agenda. Any questions or comments?
Yes, sir. Make a motion, we approve the consent agenda.
Second. Have a motion as second to approve the consent agenda as is. Any discussion? Hearing none, let's have a roll call, starting with Alderman Royal.
Alderman Royal.
Yes.
Alderman Astor.
Yes.
Alderman Best.
Yes.
Alderman Brinson.
Yes.
Mayor Odom.
Yes, motion carries. Next is a presentation by Old North State League to use Caper Park for summer college baseball. Mr. Hughes.
Good evening, Mayor Alderman. Several months ago, Alec Allard with the Old North State League approached the city about their interest in possibly bringing a team with the Old North State League to New Bern, and so Mr. Allard is here tonight to give a presentation on that.
Okay, awesome. Thank you, everybody, Mayor, City Manager, Board of Alderman. Appreciate the opportunity to speak today. My name is Alec Allard, and my family, this is my father, we own the Old North State League. The purpose of the presentation today is we would like to bring a college summer baseball league back to New Bern. So I'll go through pretty briefly the PowerPoint presentation and then answer any questions if anybody has. So the Old North State League is currently the fourth-largest collegiate summer woodbat league in the country. It's made up of 16 teams going into 2024, the newest addition of Jacksonville. We have teams in Elizabeth City, Brunswick County, Kinston, Hendersonville, Raleigh, Pineville, and a list of others. Our season runs from late May to late July, and teams typically play 20 to 25 home games each year and are made up of college players from the surrounding areas. I would say, on average, 60 to 70% of our players come within 30 or 45 miles of their home city, but we have host families in place to take out-of-state players as well. Just a couple pictures. Bogey Ballpark is in Pinehurst. That's one of our more successful teams where my family actually owns that team, and we built a stadium there last year. Tremway Park is owned by the Sanford Spinners, a former mill league team that we kind of revamped and made a college summer league team. Here's some examples of current ballparks around the league. Jake Dureal Stadium in Fayetteville, Berkeley Mills Park, which is a mill league that's in Hendersonville, and Jack Hughes Park, a new stadium that was constructed a couple of years ago in Pineville. The big thing about why we want to come to New Bern is, New Bern is a market, a similar market where we've been successful in the past. This has a great population, but has a very strong tourist draw as well. There's a deep history of baseball in New Bern and specifically Caper Park. And so where we've been in the past, that rich history has not only allowed those teams to be successful because the talent is still in the area, but there's always been a ton of community sport behind it. When we created the league back five years ago together, I was playing minor league baseball at the time, and I injured my wrist, and I was in Michigan, so we drove, I was driving home, and we crafted the idea of the league over a phone call and obviously expanded upon now. But the big thing was, we wanted to get baseball back into communities around North Carolina. I personally believe that minor league and major league baseball have done not a good job at expanding the game. They've made the game smaller in communities, especially around North Carolina. And so what we wanted to do was take what the mill league teams did back in the early 1900s and kind of revamp it a little bit, but expand upon what they did and try to bring baseball back to some of these forgotten baseball communities. And New Bern is one of those places. And so those are the few things, briefly, that we really like about the potential of bringing a team to New Bern. As I touched on, we have a lot of scenarios around the league where we have had old ballparks, old minor league parks that we've renovated and brought back to life. And so Caper is like a prime example of what we've done in the past and what we would like to do. We want to bring it back to life. We want to get more people into Caper Park and really revitalize it. This is an example of a mill league stadium that we renovated. This was the very first one that we ever did. Actually, he was responsible pretty much for this one back in 2014. This is in Ram, so in North Carolina, which is our hometown. Just some other pictures of starting construction. So in 2022, the top picture, that was bogey ballpark. There was nothing there. And then in the summer of 2022, three months later, what you see in the bottom right corner and the bottom left corner, that was built in three months from the ground up. So plans and initiatives, we would like to hire a local general manager, work with Carson Rec, work with the ECABL, work with different groups to grow baseball and grow recreation and grow the community and help the community in different ways, drive economic revenue to different businesses, and really kind of use sports entertainment to be a benefit beyond just the community aspect, but also to the local businesses as well. Our proposal is, we will invest what's estimated to be between $250,000 and $350,000 into renovation projects around the ballpark, expanding the dugouts, fixing the playing surface, putting in bullpens, building the grandstand, beer patio, extending the outfield fence back to centerfield, and obviously you can see all of our estimated costs. We've done this before. Like I said, we've built probably five different ballparks in some capacity over the last few years. In exchange, what we're proposing, that we will do the investment upfront on our part and exchange, we'll give it a 10-year lease at a dollar a year and work with the city anytime that there's any types of events they'd like to host out there, work with the ECABL anytime they want to do stuff, and really just try to revitalize the ballpark. Use the ballpark for more than just college summer baseball inside of the summer. Use it for tournaments and different events to bring more people to New Bern, to stay in hotels and to eat in restaurants, and really use the ballpark year-round to drive more economic revenue to every business in the area. And here's some renderings. These were done pretty quickly, but this is kind of an idea of what we're hoping to do. Here's an example of a type of grandstand that we were talking about. It's kind of angular-built, mitercut grandstand. Just some concluding thoughts, and I won't go through every one of these, but I've heard, you know, a few concerns. Obviously, working with the ECABL, that's a commitment of mine. As I was talking to these guys earlier, from a business standpoint, these guys don't know me from Adam, so they're not going to trust me, but they can trust the business. The game of baseball has not grown, in my opinion, and so it would be the absolute worst thing in the world for me to make, to lose the fan base of probably the strongest baseball supporters in the area. So we are committed to continue to work with them. We will take over utilities for the ballpark. Obviously, what we're proposing, we feel is very fair. Granger Stadium in Kinston, the down-east Wood Ducks, they pay about $65,000 a year for their ballpark in a lease, so ours would just be on the front end to put into the investment into the field. And we would work with the city to make sure that any and all events that the city wants to host out there, more than welcome to work together and get those scheduled. But that's it.
All right. Board have questions?
Is there... Okay, sorry.
Go ahead.
Any concern about parking? Because, I mean, I saw, you know, from the stadiums that you either built or renovated, you know, those looked like they were pretty open fields. Here, this Caper Park is pretty much downtown, and so the only thing you have is on-street parking. Any concerns about that or anything you think you can do about that?
Yeah, I think that we would obviously have to utilize on-street parking. I think another thing that we have done in other scenarios is use, work with other local businesses in the nearby area and actually giving them a revenue stream by renting out their lots on game days and giving them some money for people to park there. Obviously, our staff is responsible for cleaning up their lots and stuff and making sure they're left in good condition, but just another way for us to kind of help each other out a little bit.
Well, also, I guess this is a question to you. I know in the past we've had some problems with balls hitting people's homes and popping up into the cemetery and all of that, but is there now, because I know in a particular area, once a netting was put in, so is that whole field besides just the area where the street is, it's not netted?
So based on concerns when the Eastern Carolina Amateur Baseball League started playing, we had some issues with balls hitting police department, the church, some houses behind there. So we installed netting approximately 35 feet high into the air to address the issues, and since we've installed that, we've had no issues whatsoever.
Okay, and that's just on the side where the church and the houses were in the police department?
That's in the outfield area, yes. Nothing in the behind there to go over into the... We traditionally haven't had many issues with things whatever into the cemeteries. Every once in a while, you'll get a pot fly that hits something in the road, but that's you and Barbara doing it.
Okay. So the area by the street where people's cars are parked, so that's what I would think my law is hitting in a citizen's car or whatever, causing damage or whatever. So is that a side that I'm maybe going to net in or what? Have a net installed or what on that side of this?
So we haven't seen all their proposed plans yet and their revenues outside of what you've just seen. Traditionally, what happens if a pot fly hits a car, and like in the current agreement we have with the current teams that are playing, they're responsible for covering the cost of damage.
And that would include liability for the six homes on the outfield fence?
That's correct. That's correct. And of course, like I said, we have, the city has invested significantly in the netting to prevent that from occurring in the future.
I want to just make sure that the league that we currently have, and we have some of the members here tonight, are going to be accommodated and not pushed out or not be able to play because of a conflict. Have you had an opportunity to sit down and work an agreement with them?
We haven't sat down and worked out an agreement, but I did speak today with them, and as I said, it would be a very, it would be a bad business idea for us to not accommodate some of the strongest baseball fans in the area. Not to mention, it adds revenue to the team as well. So for example, the more eyes that we can track that come to that field, the more the advertisement on the outfield wall is worth, and the more the concessions would do well and whatnot. So obviously, this needs to, we'll need to work out, because I haven't yet to see the agreement they have with the city, but I'm absolutely 100%. We're committed to making sure that it becomes a better thing for them.
Alderman Best?
Well, I don't know what the decision of this board's going to be tonight. I know this is just a presentation, but still, we can vote on it, so, but I don't know what the board decision may be, but me personally, we had, I think that before we do make a decision approving this, that we should hear the voices of our citizens because when we attack Yoni Point Park, we had a lot of citizens concerned. So I don't know if we're planning on maybe have a public hearing on this item, at least hear the voices of our citizens before we take action.
Would there be a required public hearing?
I'm sorry?
Would there be a required public hearing?
A public hearing is not required. It's up to the governing board if you would like to have one.
So what are you looking for, not just directions to?
That's what we're looking for. If you would like for us, if the city is interested in entering into an agreement with the Old North State League, just direction for us to negotiate a contract, then we would just come back to the board with that, and then the board would approve.
Great. Well, I think it's a good thing for New Bern, there's no entertainment. We've got somebody that's going to invest a tremendous amount of money into one of our ballfields, so I would like to give the city manager your directions.
Excuse me, before you to give your directions, I think that, as you say, I am not against this, don't get me wrong. I think this is great for our city. It's going to bring in revenue and it's going to bring in entertainment, like you said, but I just think we need to let our citizens have a voice in this before we, as a board, give direction on how, on approving this. Me personally, I think this would be, when you talk about a stadium, you're talking size-wise and stadium, and I'm looking at, this would be a good contribution for Martin Marietta Park. I don't know what the...
Just to be clear, they're not going to build a stadium.
No, no, they're not building a stadium.
They're talking about adding some seats. I think if you were...
Innovation.
Yeah, if you were to go to Martin Marietta Park and put a baseball, if you were to duplicate what they want to do in Martin Marietta, Mr. Manager, I'm guessing it's going to be a lot more.
I know it's going to be costly. It'll be costly, but, I mean, that's an ideal. That would be a larger area, would accommodate Martin Marietta Park, future as you want an amphitheater, so, but still, that's down the line. I know it's a costly effect for them, and I don't know if, what this team is actually wanting to contribute more than what you're saying here on this presentation dollar-wise, but I just, again, I'm going to reiterate, I think our citizens need a voice in this.
Alderman Brinson.
I think rather than having something as formal as a public hearing, perhaps a town hall in the Omega Center for the Dryboro residents might be a better option to get public input than having a public hearing here, is my opinion.
I don't think that you, why are you just pinpointing Dryboro and that area? We're talking about all citizens of this city. That's the people's part. It's every citizen in this city's part.
I'm saying it's, those are the people that are going to be most affected with traffic, noise, lights, all of that. That's why I said.
Ward one? Ward one will be affected as well, ward two and ward five.
Caper Park's probably been there 100 years, and I, you know, it's been nothing but positive ever since it's been there, as far as I've ever heard. So again, I would like to recommend Alderman Royal wants to speak.
Thank you so much. I definitely would be in favor of citizens' input, just having a voice. I, this is a wonderful opportunity, and I certainly do support it, but again, I still feel that we should have a citizen's input in whatever form that we can get it in, whether it's through a public hearing or whether it's just a town hall, I still feel that the citizens should have a voice in it.
How about through social, a survey through social media?
Oh, we know how that goes.
That doesn't work.
I'll just, I'd like to make some comments. Is that all you had, Alderman Royal?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. First of all, I want to thank you for the presentation. I think it was very well put together. I also want to thank you for your interest in our city. I think you've identified that what all of us that's here, we already know that New Bern's a special place, and you would like to participate in that. And I personally have no issue with engaging the public in this. I think we've got to do a good job, though, at educating the public exactly what we're talking about when we're having this discussion. Oftentimes, things get on social media, and it's not the full story or it's not the right information. I think if we're going to do this, that we need to make sure we have all the information together. My, I think the conundrum, a little conundrum that we're in, is there's going to be some questions that some folks are going to have that we don't have answers to right now, such as the netting along left field line, parking, you know, do they have agreements with some local places nearby that they could utilize that parking? Those are things that we've got to get worked out, but I think tonight, in the spirit of the presentation, it is, do we have an interest in moving forward with this discussion or do we not? And it sounded like to me that everybody is in favor of moving forward with the discussion. We're not making any decisions tonight. We just want to tell them, yes, we support the idea and the concept, and yes, we want to move forward to the next step, whatever that may be. Is that a fair assessment, Board?
Yes.
It's a fair assessment with citizen input.
Okay, with citizen input. All right. Is that all you need, Mr. Manager?
Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
Moving on to item number eight, consider adopting a resolution approving the 2023 water shortage response plan. Mr. Jordan Hughes.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the board. What you have in front of you tonight is a recommendation to adopt the 2023 Water Shortage Response Plan. Every water system in North Carolina is required by general statutes to prepare a water shortage response plan that basically outlines the actions that the city will take in response to reduced water supply. Very fortunate for New Bern, we have groundwater systems and very deep groundwater wells, so the likelihood that we run into a scenario where we have to enact the water shortage response plan is extremely small. In the history, we have yet to cross any of the thresholds in the plan where we need to take any action, and I don't foresee that. With what we manage, aquifers now through state allocation, it would be a very unlikely scenario where we'd ever have to impact this plan. But nevertheless, we have to have a plan in place, and the plan has to be updated every five years. This year, the plan was due for update. The only updates that were made to the plan were minor clerical revisions to email addresses where we changed the dot.org.gov and updated the city manager from Mr. Stevens to Mr. Hughes. Other than that, the rest of the plan stays the same. It has been submitted to NTDQ for review. They've sent us back a letter indicating it meets their requirements. And the final step to formally get everything approved to the state is for the board to adopt a resolution saying this is our plan for 2023. Do you have to answer any questions?
Board have questions?
If no questions, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt the 2023 City of New Bern Water Shortage Response Plan.
Second.
Have a motion as second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, let's have a roll call, starting with Alderman Astor.
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Brinson?
Yes.
Alderman Royal?
Yes.
Mayor Odom?
Yes, motion carries. Thank you, Jordan.
Thank you.
Next up is item number nine, consider adopting a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a real estate purchase and sale agreement with Warehouser Company for land for the New Bern Electric Substation. Mr. Bouchard.
Good evening, Mayor. Alderman. What you have for you tonight is a purchase agreement for two parcels of land, four acres and two acres, for a total of six acres that we need to purchase to construct a new substation and a new interconnection to the bulk electric system. Been talking about this project, trying to develop for the last four years. This is a big stepping stone for us to secure that property so that we can continue to build the substation. It'll allow us to add load to the electric system. It'll allow us to create the ability to reroute power to distressed areas, and it'll give us the ability to reroute power so that we can do much-needed maintenance inspection and testing on the system. Be happy to answer any of your questions.
Board have questions?
If so, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a real estate purchase and sale agreement with Warehouser Company for land for a new electrical, land for a much-needed new electrical substation.
Second. Have a motion as second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, let's have a roll call, starting with Alderman Best.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Brinson?
Yes.
Alderman Royal?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Mayor Odom?
Yes, motion carries. Item number 10, I think this is part of the last one, consider adopting a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a letter of agreement with Warehouser for easement rights. Mr. Bouchard.
And these easements will tie the substation and the bulk electric system together, along with our electrical distribution system. It's about 20, almost 23 acres of easements that we need to acquire, and we're looking for your approval on those easement agreements tonight.
Board have questions on item number 10?
Yes. Mr. Bouchard, Warehouser wouldn't give us an easement?
No, ma'am.
Without cost, since we're purchasing the other six acres?
Correct.
Okay. I just had to ask. I know...
I asked too.
Wow. That's, okay.
I did.
You would think they would be willing to give us an easement. That's all.
Ma'am, I make a motion that we adopt a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a letter of agreement with Warehouser for easement rights.
Second.
Have a motion as second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, let's have a roll call, starting with Alderman Brinson.
Alderman Brinson?
Yes.
Alderman Royal?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Mayor Odom?
Yes, motion carries. Item number 11, consider adopting an ordinance amending the 2019 Electric Improvements Fund. Ms. Oshron.
The ordinance amends the 2019 Electric Improvements Project Fund to recognize a $87,183 reduction in appropriation from the Golden Leaf Grant. Golden Leaf approved $320,000 in funding for the utility's Disaster Recovery and Resiliency Project. The project has been completed and expenditures reimbursed in the amount of $232,817. Since the grant has been closed, the budget needs to be reduced by this difference.
Board have questions on item number 11?
If no questions, I'd like to make a motion to adopt an ordinance amending the 2019 Electric Improvements Fund.
Second.
Have a motion as second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, let's have a roll call, starting with Alderman Royal.
Alderman Royal?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Brinson?
Yes.
Mayor Odom?
Yes, motion carries. Thank you.
Item number 12 is appointments. Alderman Royal, I show that you have one for the Board of Adjustment.
I do. I would like to appoint, looking for my paper, Ms. Kathleen Marty to the Board of Adjustment to serve the unexpired term for Mr. Peter Dillian to complete his term.
The Board have questions, or is there a second for that motion?
Second.
Have a second, Alderman Brinson. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Let me add to that also. I would like to make a motion to appoint Mr. Brendan Lofton as the ultimate alternate to replace Ms. Kathleen Marty to serve in absent of the regular members to the Board of Adjustments also.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, Alderman Brinson. Any discussion? Ms. Clerk, are you clear on those two?
Yes.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Next, Alderman Kinsey's not here. Alderman Brinson, you have an opening for P&amp;Z, playing in his own?
Yes, I'd like to nominate Ms. Kelly Kaiser. I sent her resume out to you yesterday.
Have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
A second. Alderman Best, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, she is approved. And we have the two vacancies on the redevelopment commission, well, actually, one vacancy and one that is up for reappointment that would like to be. Alderman Royal expressed some concern that, or she would desire to make that appointment at our next board meeting, which is August the 8th, and then the redevelopment commission meeting is August the 9th. The Board wants to wait until then, we can certainly do that. We do have two members that's out, so.
Yeah, well, I guess it would be fair to give those two board members an opportunity to weigh in on this and...
Okay.
So this will be at the August 8th meeting?
Correct. So we'll have the clerk ready and prepared for the decision that we make that night so the next morning, she can go ahead and make that call so they can be prepared, so, whoever that is that we end up choosing. Did I miss any appointments from anyone? Okay, attorneys report.
Nothing tonight, ma'am.
Thank you. City managers report?
I have a few things to update you on. This past Friday, the Police Department and Fire Rescue Department had their annual Battle of the Badges. 254 pints of blood were collected. Their goal was 250. The winning department was Fire Rescue. They got the most pledges, so congratulations to Fire Rescue and Chief Boyd. The Stanley White Recreation Center groundbreaking ceremony will be held on Friday, August 4th, on Third Avenue at 11:00 a.m. After the ceremony, we will provide a light lunch, so we encourage the public to come out and enjoy those activities. Also, the Duffy Field paving project. Last week, contractors milled the roads in Duffy Field. This week, the contractor has been working on the fine grading. They finished the fine grading this afternoon. Tomorrow morning, the paving starts, and so the paving of those roads should be completed by the end of the day on Thursday, so we're excited about that project finally taking place. Also, we have two stormwater projects going on on Trent Road. Mobilization will be occurring this week with work to commence immediately thereafter. And the last thing I have for you is, last year, our finance director asked that we have an audit committee that consisted last year of the mayor, Alderman Brinson, and Alderman Best, and our audit committee basically looked at a variety of documents as the staff prepared for the annual audit. We're in the process of working on our current audit now, and we would like to reconstitute that committee, so if the same individuals have an interest, or if the mayor would like to determine what's the best way to appoint new folks, that's what we'd like to hear.
You said it was the three of us last year?
Yes, you, Alderman Best, and Alderman Brinson.
Would you two like to do it again?
I'd like to give someone, another board member an opportunity.
I was going to say the same thing, sir. Would either of you like to serve on the audit committee?
I will.
All right, Alderman Royal, Alderman Brinson, and when do you need to know?
And we can wait till the next meeting.
Yeah, if you want to go ahead and pencil those two in, and if Alderman Kinsey or Alderman Prill would like to take my place, they're more than happy to. If not, then I'll serve.
I think our first meeting will be held about the middle of August, so that'll be plenty of time, and that's all I have tonight, sir.
Okay. Move on to new business for the Board. Alderman Brinson?
I don't have anything, Mr. Mayor.
Alderman Best?
Yes, I do. I just want to ask, no, first of all, I'd like to say thank you to you, Mr. Williams, and I'm assuming Parks and Recs and Public Works that went over and did an outstanding job at Evergreen Cemetery for the cleanup. Just want to thank you for that. What departments were involved?
It was the Public Works.
Public Works, okay. Just wanted to say thank you. And secondly, I want to ask a question. I got a call from a citizen that wants to know, I guess this is basically an environmental issue, that you were saying that one of their neighbors got a lot of stuff out on the side of their house, and every time they come home, they're smelling mold and mildew, and was that a risk factor? I don't know how mold and mildew actually, when it's out in the open air as opposed to enclosed in a building or whatever.
I can get the information from you shortly, and then we'll pass that on to our newest assistant, they tell you.
Okay.
Public Services.
All right, thank you. And that's all I have.
Okay.
Alderman Astor?
Yes, Mayor, I just want to briefly remind everyone that's traveling over in the James City area, this construction work over there is really getting hazardous. There's a lot of, traffic backs up easily, and there's a tremendous amount of everywhere they put the pipes underneath the highway, some huge bumps in the road that they paved over and didn't fill them evidently all the way up before they paved them, because they are, they're pretty bad. So just be careful if you're in that area. And other than that, I would like to thank you for having a very short meeting tonight so I could go home and celebrate my wife and I's 43rd wedding anniversary.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Alderman Royal?
I have nothing. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, do we need a closed session?
No, sir.
All right, if not, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
So.
Have a motion as second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.